Call to order the meeting of the Select Board for May 6. We will be going into executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21. We will be meeting in room 309. The Board will discuss the following: collective bargaining with the police brotherhood, Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the Chair declares so, which I do. And we will be also under Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21a3, for the police chief contract and the deputy police contract to conduct strategy sessions in preparations for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. We also will have a DTEA Level 3 grievance hearing, which is covered under Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21a1, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition or mental health rather than the professional competence of an individual or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member or individual. If you have our agenda for the executive session, there are three items listed under DTEA Level 3 grievance hearing, which has the body of conduct strategies for sessions, negotiations. Those are an error and those are not going to be handled. So I need a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brooks. On the motion, roll call vote, Mr. Tattelbaum.
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson.
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil.
Yes.
Ms. Brooks.
Yes.
Chair goes in favor. We'll be here, we'll be returning into open session as close to 6:30 as possible.
Call the order, the meeting of May 6th of the Select Board. Please rise for a salute to the flag. Please remain standing afterwards.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the people for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing as we offer a moment of silence for our veterans, both here and abroad, both past and present. Please be seated. All right, please excuse the delay. We just ran a little bit long. In executive session 6:30, we have appointment. Actually, we have two hearings. One on install, one new pole along Evelyn Street. I'm going to open up the hearing. It is now open. And for Eversource, we have... Hi. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you and all, and thank you for having me this evening.
Okay. And the reason you are here is for?
We have two petitions. One on Highland Avenue. Eversource is petitioning to install two new joint-owned poles. This is for a DG project. It's a solar project that's going on. It's for 465 Highland Avenue. So we're, we have a few other poles going in, but these are two that we need to get in pretty quickly.
And the Evelyn Street?
And the Evelyn Street is one joint-owned pole, and that's for clearance. It's going in between two existing poles. It is, I can tell you, I'll give you the area. Sorry. So it's, it's right near the property at 46 Evelyn Street. So it's going in between existing poles, one, let's see, 148 over one and one, very hard to say, sorry, 220 over three. And this is for clearance, as I said, sagging wire.
All right, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to open up the hearing for both, both of the Evelyn Street and the Highland Avenue. All right, is there anybody here who wishes to speak in favor of these pole locations other than Eversource? Okay, anybody here who wishes to oppose it? Okay, I'm going to close the hearing. All right, board members, pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Both? Both pole locations?
Both locations, sorry.
Thank you. Is there a second? As this meeting is now being recorded and available at DCTV on demand at their YouTube, all votes will be by voice, since all members are present. Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Unanimous? All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nice seeing you again. Okay, under new business, our first item was the Frank Gracie recognition. Unfortunately, Mr. Gracie's son got called into work and cannot attend. And also, at the same time, if he can't attend, Mrs. Gracie cannot attend. So we will hold that for another day. Next, actually, I want to take something out of order. Matt, you're up. I'm going to take you out of order and get you home.
All right, so ma'am, gentlemen, I'm just here to discuss the parade coming up on the 27th. I just have a quick question for you. Mr. McDonald, as the chair, would you like to speak at the cemetery? Typically, the chair of the Select Board says a few words.
Yeah, I will. I'll make every effort to attend as far as speaking.
If I can get someone to do it...
Personally, I'd rather let the moment speak for itself.
Absolutely, but typically we have...
I think Memorial Day is not a day for politicians. It's a day to remember.
Right, okay. I just, honestly, I just need to update Dymaeth Week. Yeah, so, perfect, awesome. So we have about 15 community organizations that are participating. I've already met with the Dymaeth Police, the DPW, and EMA. We have a follow-up meeting on the 15th. To tie it up any loose ends, I have the services again of Mr. Pimental for the rear of the parade. Also, side note, spoke with Parks Department. The banners are going up in the coming days. Unfortunately, we won't have any rifles at this year's parade. Ironically enough, I finally got the contact information last year, because generally speaking, the joke was they would just kind of appear out of the mist, the revolutionary guys. And so I reached out, and unfortunately, this year, they're not going to be able to make it. So we won't have, we won't have any rifles along the route. I've kind of exhausted all of my avenues on that one. So also, another side note, on the 18th of May, we will be replacing all the flags down at the Elm Street Cemetery. So if the community wants to come out and support that, that would be great.
All right, on the banners?
Yes, sir.
Are all the banners in decent shape?
Brand new.
Okay.
When are they going, are they up already?
Say again, sir?
Are they up already?
I spoke with Tim. They're going up.
Were they repurchased last year?
Yep, because they got, they're very old fated. They're being on Elm Street. The wind gets to them. It's all, it's all air, so...
Well, I know, because normally, when we first did it, we wanted to make sure that they were up many, many weeks before and a week or two after.
Exactly. So the weather and all that prior to that date is, you know, a little bit worse than, say, maybe after. So we can keep up a little bit longer on the, on the tail end of that, but I understand your point.
Okay. All right, because the idea came from, actually, New Jersey.
Yeah, a lot of towns here in Massachusetts have them. Yeah, a lot of them. Ironically, I feel just doing them for any veteran, and I like how in Dymaeth we had the criteria.
Yeah, I was in, I was in New Jersey for a wedding, and I saw them in the town, so I figured, you know, at the time, the Veterans Agent Roy, I was speaking to Roy Oliver about it, and we decided to get it done. It was unfortunately, the only hard part is getting the pictures of some of the older veterans from World War I.
Yep, absolutely.
Getting the, and the family not being around to find that, so, but we know who they are. And that's the most important thing.
And their names will be, again, they'll be on their names at the World War I monument at the end of the parade.
All right, also, hopefully, I will have available a open-air car, ragtop, and if there's a veteran who needs a ride, I'll be more than happy to take.
All right, awesome. I can also throw out there that every year, we have the convertibles meet down at the COA. We have a former member of the board, the advisory board, for me, kind of organizes that, and they come through at the end and get into the parade, so...
If I'm not mistaken, he has a convertible GTO. It makes me kind of upset, so...
Okay, all right, so if I have the audio, I'll be available.
Excellent.
Okay, all right, board members, any questions? Okay, all right, thank you, Matt.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next item, we have three letters, is it three?
Four.
Four. Four letters of interest on the, from the planning board. We still accepting more, or?
There's just open until closed or appointed.
Okay.
And that's currently just one seat.
All right, so is that, and when is it the last day? Do we going to take?
We haven't set a last day. It's been advertised since the election and...
Okay, so I, what I'd like to do is I'd like to have it closed, and then let's, let's bring, let's bring these people in, set up a meeting with the planning board, two weeks or three weeks?
I'll see what their availability is for the next...
Yeah, see what their availability is, whether it's before. Actually, make it after town meeting. Make it the meeting after town meeting if at all possible, and then that way, we can get somebody up and running.
Is there a need to wait that long, Mr. Chair?
It's just availability of the planning board. It's going to be a joint session, so... And they seem to be operating well under four, so, just as we have in the past.
All right, next item on the agenda, we have a special officer appointment of Ryan Mitchell. The chief was going to be here, but I told the chief he didn't have to show up. Board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Ms. Brooks. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Unanimous? All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nice seeing you again. Okay, under new business, our first item was the Frank Gracie recognition. Unfortunately, Mr. Gracie's son got called into work and cannot attend, and also, at the same time, if he can't attend, Mrs. Gracie cannot attend. So we will hold that for another day. Next, actually, I want to take something out of order. Matt? You're up. I'm going to take you out of order and get you home.
All right, so ma'am, gentlemen, I'm just here to discuss the parade coming up on the 27th. I just have a quick question for you. Mr. McDonald, as the chair, would you like to speak at the cemetery? Typically, the chair of the Select Board says a few words.
Yeah, I will, I'll, I will make every effort to attend as far as speaking.
If I can get someone to do it...
I'd rather, well, personally, I'd rather let the moment speak for itself.
Absolutely, but typically we have...
And I think Memorial Day is not a day for politicians. It's a day to remember.
Right, okay. I just, honestly, I just need to update Dymaeth Week. Yeah, so, perfect, awesome. So we have about 15 community organizations that are participating. I've already met with the Dymaeth Police, the DPW, and EMA. We have a follow-up meeting on the 15th. To tie it up any loose ends, I have the services again of Mr. Pimental for the rear of the parade. Also, side note, spoke with Parks Department. The banners are going up in the coming days. Unfortunately, we won't have any rifles at this year's parade. Ironically enough, I finally got the contact information last year, because generally speaking, the joke was they would just kind of appear out of the mist, the revolutionary guys. And so I reached out, and unfortunately, this year, they're not going to be able to make it. So we won't have, we won't have any rifles along the route. I've kind of exhausted all of my avenues on that one. So also, another side note, on the 18th of May, we will be replacing all the flags down at the Elm Street Cemetery. So if the community wants to come out and support that, that would be great.
All right, on the banners?
Yes, sir.
Are all the banners in decent shape?
Brand new.
Okay.
Right.
When are they going, are they up already?
Say again, sir?
Are they up already?
I spoke with Tim. They're, they're going up.
Were they repurchased last year?
Yep, because they got, they're very old fated. They're being on Elm Street.
Yep.
The wind gets to them. It's all, it's all air, so...
Well, I know, because normally, when we first did it, we wanted to make sure that they were up many, many weeks before and a week or two after.
Exactly. So the weather and all that prior to that date is, you know, a little bit worse than, say, maybe after. So we can keep up a little bit longer on the, on the tail end of that, but I understand your point.
Okay, all right, because the idea came from, actually, New Jersey.
Yeah, a lot of towns here in Massachusetts have them. Yeah, a lot of them, ironically, I feel just doing them for any veteran, and I like how in Dymaeth we had the criteria.
Yeah, I was in, I was in New Jersey for a wedding, and I saw them in the town, so I figured, you know, at the time, the Veterans Agent Roy, I was speaking to Roy Oliver about it, and we decided to get it done. It was unfortunately, the only hard part is getting the pictures of some of the older veterans from World War I.
Yep, absolutely.
Getting the, and, and the family not being around to find that, so, but, but we know who they are.
Absolutely.
And that's the most important thing.
And their names will be, again, they'll be on their names at the World War I monument at the end of the parade.
All right, also, hopefully, I will have available a open-air car, ragtop, and if there's a veteran who needs a ride, I'll be more than happy to take.
All right, awesome. I can also throw out there that every year, we have the convertibles meet down at the COA. We have a former member of the board, the advisory board, for me, kind of organizes that, and they come through at the end and get into the parade, so...
If I'm not mistaken, he has a convertible GTO. It makes me kind of upset, so...
Okay, all right, so if I'm, if I have the audio, I'll be available.
Excellent.
Okay, all right, board members, any questions? Okay, all right, thank you, Matt.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next item, we have three letters, is it three?
Four.
Four. Four letters of interest on the, from the planning board. We still accepting more, or?
There's just open until closed or appointed.
Okay.
So we haven't, we haven't...
And that's currently just one seat.
All right, so is that, and when is it the last day? Do we going to take?
We haven't set a last day. It's been advertised since the election and...
Okay, so I, what I'd like to do is I'd like to have it closed, and then let's, let's bring, let's bring these people in, set up a meeting with the planning board, two weeks or three weeks?
I'll see what their availability is for the next...
Yeah, see what their availability is, whether it's before. Actually, make it after town meeting. Make it the meeting after town meeting if at all possible, and then that way, we can get somebody up and running.
Is there a need to wait that long, Mr. Chair?
It's just availability of the planning board. It's going to be a joint session, so... And they seem to be operating well under four, so, just as we have in the past.
All right, next item on the agenda, we have a special officer appointment of Ryan Mitchell. The chief was going to be here, but I told the chief he didn't have to show up. Board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Ms. Brooks. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Unanimous? Okay. All right, next item, we have the SERPED Annual Joint Transportation Planning Group. Mr. Barber has been our appointed representative, and lucky him, he gets to be reappointed again. I know he looks forward to these meetings a great deal, so...
Do we need to vote on this?
Yes, we do, so...
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Second.
Ms. Brooks. On the motion, any questions?
Is that a 20-year term?
Nineteen.
Lifetime. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Unanimous? We have, next item, we have Pathways Committee resignation from Doug Roscoe. Do I have a motion to accept with regret?
With regret.
Thank you. Made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Mrs. Brooks.
Mrs. Brooks. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, and let's get it posted, see if we get somebody in there.
Wait a minute, timeout. We're going to post for, for...
Just told Mr. McGinnis to get it posted, yes.
Good evening, Tim Barber, Department of Public Works Director. So regarding the cellular meter endpoint installations, there has been some delay in, in the installations as the project was supposed to be completed this past December, but the, the installer, Bay State Wind Supply, has, has added some extra installers, and they're moving, moving ahead pretty quickly. To date, Bay State has installed approximately 6,602 endpoints, and the town has installed an additional 440, the water division, adding up to 7,400, 7,042 total completed installations, about 76% of the project, with about 2160 remaining. To date, about 3,800 of the installations required appointments in, for interior installations, and though, most of those are complete, the last few, the appointment letters have been sent out as of April 13th, so those appointments will be dwindling down, and they'll be finishing those as well as the exterior installations. Any remaining customers that haven't responded to the three letters, so they, they start off sending one letter, they follow it up, and then a third letter, after the third letter, if there's no response, they do forward it to us, us in the water division, to reach out to the resident to see if they need help with either applying for the, for the appointment or getting online with the software, or, or just, some, some residents just don't want a, a private company coming into the house, so the water division has stepped up and completed these installations. They are on track to complete all the installations that have responded by the end of June 2024, and like I said, any outstanding appointments will be completed by the water division, and, and those, those installations, the cost of those installations will be credited back from the contract, so. To date, we've had about a handful of complaints, and I think one positive call commenting that, you know, the, the installers did a great job and went above and beyond. We had two complaints of property damage that were repaired by the contractor, there was, you know, we had, we had a couple software troubles that in the end, you know, that I think they might have resolved themselves if the software was malfunctioning, but never, nobody found a problem with the software. And then, we had a, we had a couple people that had complained that people were on their property and didn't, didn't, you know, go up to the door and notify them that they were at the property to install one of the exterior units, so we sat down with the company and the consultant, and asked them that any installer that goes on somebody's property, you know, you should touch base with the, with the resident, let, to let them know you're gonna be working on their property, because if somebody, you know, looks out their window and somebody's screwing something into the house, it can be alarming, so, so, so all the , you know, any additional installations, they'll, they'll be notifying the residents.
Okay, so with the, with a proposed or a potential completion date of June 2024, next month, what in terms are we now looking at starting up the quarterly billing cycle?
Well, you probably know, we, our utility billing clerk has taken another position in town, so we don't really have a utility billing clerk at this time, so there will need to be some training and get them, get a new clerk online before we move into the quarterly billing, because that's double the work as, as biannually billing.
Has that position been posted yet?
Yes, it has, and-
No way we can fill that internally?
It's posted, so if somebody-
Advertised internally, it's a union position, so we advertise it internally, and then we have no interest, we advertise it externally.
Yeah, and so, so we, we're working with a consultant as well, who may be able to assist in that as well, if needed.
Okay, alright, well-
Have these, have these meters installed, they're operating, is that how it works?
Correct, as soon as they're installed and they're, they're kind of rectified, they start reading cellular, reading automatically, so-
Are we happy the way they're operating?
What's that?
Are we happy the way they're operating?
Yeah, there, there's been some, there's been some errors on the, you know, with, with programming that we've been catching up with, and, and our clerk in the utility billing office, in the collector's office, she's done a great job with keeping up with those, and, and corresponding with the water division to make sure, and the consultant to make sure these errors were taken care of, so, yeah.
So this'll help with a seamless way to read these meters, as opposed to the old method we had, have now-
Correct, so everything will be real-time, so-
Because we've had some issues with homeowners, with, with meters and bills and lodge bills, and they seem to be not, they haven't been taken care of, and, you know, it's, there's a lot of money involved, so hopefully, that'll solve any of the issues going forward.
Yeah, so, so currently, if, if there's a lodge bill that somebody has a complaint about or concern, you know, they, they go to the water department, they can call the water department and collector's office, and then in turn, the water department will do a, a 90-day, that's the max we can do, is go back 90 days to read the usage. The problem with that is, it's a, it's a six-month bill, right, so, and by the time they get the bill and find out that it's high in, in call, it might be, might be a couple of weeks, might be a month after the read, so that gives you, that gives you maybe 60 days into that billing cycle, which doesn't give you a lot of information. So this cellular software will give you real-time, and you can go back, you can go, go back to the day it was installed and, and read all the usage, so you can keep track of it, so, I think-
My experience with this, with that meter personally was, was wonderful, I went online, had an appointment at eight o'clock in the morning on a Tuesday, I believe, a couple of weeks ago, the gentleman was at the doorbell, rang the doorbell at five minutes of eight, and he was out the door by quarter past.
Right, and you had an interior?
Yes.
Installation?
Absolutely wonderful.
I did too, and the guy, the guy that did it was on a Saturday, and-
Great job.
As a matter of fact, he was from Bristol. He was from Bristol, Rhode Island, so-
A wind supply you worked for.
Yeah, but it was a-
Yeah, same guy.
Yeah, but he was a contractor.
Yeah, I, I'm the same guy.
Can you go back into the billing clerk position?
Yes.
What, what transpired there, how long has that person been vacated from that position?
I think she gave notice maybe a week or two ago, and we've, we've met with the, couple of the departments, and she's, and we're trying to keep her on that, in that position on a Monday, Friday schedule, and then working in the other department Tuesday, Thursday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Okay, so the, the position wasn't vacated wholly, it was somebody that moved, moved around a little bit?
Yeah.
Just, usually, with the DTA union positions, so once they apply, you know, we try to make sure that the offices are covered, so we'll do a transition with some scheduling, we did that in the building department, the assessor's office, and now we're doing it as part of the billing clerk position.
So hopefully, we can get that-
So we'll, you know, our water, water division staff will also try, try to keep track and, and work with the utility billing clerk to keep everything up to date, you know, they'll be working some overtime to, to make that work, but-
Any idea what, what the reason was for vacating?
A new position, higher pay, yeah.
Good reason.
You would've done the same thing.
Of course I would. Okay, alright, well, it's good to see this coming to an end, and see, I'm more interested in seeing the results once the billing starts, and, you know, I mean, you know, six-month bills, you know, there was, for some people, you know, it's, it's a burden.
Yeah, because, you know, you have the budget for six months, it's tough, you know, that's why I think-
And most of the time, the six months, it's not calendar, it's, you know-
Right, it depends on, it depends on the read.
It's half the summer, half the fall, half the fall and the winter, so you kind of get different-
Yep, yeah, because every, every section is read at a different month, so, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I get half the summer, so it's, like, so they're kind of consistent, but, alright.
Going quarterly, you know, and a lot, you know, most residents get their billing monthly, you know, so that you can budget for it, and it's a monthly bill where, where biannually can be tough, so-
Yeah, and New Bedford does monthly readings, and I know the commercials do monthly also, correct?
Yes, no, they, they do quarterly.
Quarterly, okay.
So they'll remain quarterly, and the residential will move over to quarterly.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Okay, and then maybe in a few years afterwards, we'll do monthly.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, next we have the petitioned article presentation to the select board, it was on the citizens' petition for an additional liquor license. Attorney Bullard.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity, I guess I'm here to answer any questions you may have. I'd like to thank Sean candidly, I've never had to do a warrant before, and Sean pointed me in the right direction, I'm worried that maybe he's leaving because I was a complete headache, but-
Ah, he has found a reason, ah-ha!
So, thank you, Sean. So, I've, I'm here on behalf of Farm and Coast, everybody is familiar with where they're located, Farm and Coast has been very fortunate over the last six years or so, they've been able to develop a, a good and loyal clientele, and they would like to expand, expand their liquor offerings, as you know, they have a beer and wine license presently, they've had a lot of customers ask if they could enhance their product line with hard alcohol, and as I'm sure the board knows, the town is up against its limit on all alcoholic licenses, and so I contacted, I think it's Michelle, and also Ralph Sacramone up at the ABCC, and they mentioned, and Anthony Savistano, and they all mentioned that you could do a home rule, a home rule petition, which is what we're attempting to do, I gather, it's a, it's a somewhat cumbersome process, because even if we're lucky enough to prevail at town meeting, as I understand it, it then goes up to the legislature, and we get in touch with our state reps, and our state reps will hopefully do what we ask them to do, and then the legislature has to do what our state reps want them to do, so it's anything but a slam dunk, but it's a way for Farm and Coast to further meet the needs of their customer base, so, I'm, if, if this were voted on and supported by town meeting, and if it actually got passed, the new offerings, we, Farm and Coast would not, it's not in the town warrant, I didn't think it was appropriate to put it in the town warrant, but there'd be no nip sales, there'd be no tobacco products, there'd be no lottery tickets, we want to keep Paden Air Village as clean as possible, and we know that those type of products can result in some litter and some other things, so, as I said, I'm just here to answer any questions that you all may have.
Board members, have any questions?
No.
With the addition of the all-alcohol license, are they looking to expand the premises?
They are, and they need to do that for maybe two reasons, one is, they've had the good fortune of being somewhat successful, and so I don't go there as often as maybe I'd like, but it seems to be quite crowded more often than it used to be, so they, they may expand eastward, and if they were to do that, there, there's a twofold benefit to that, one is that customers would just have more space to sit and dine and stuff, and it would also allow us to market the, the, kind of the liquor offerings as well.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
I think the Farm and Coast is, being a former retailer, I understand what it means to cater to your customers and do a good job, and that's exactly what they've done, and I think what they're asking for is reasonable, and I support it.
Okay. I have a question, because we had a citizens' petition last year that was polled-
Yes.
Looking for something similar for a different location, when they're doing a citizens' petition, and it, it goes through all the, the town meeting and then up, is it specific to them, or it becomes an additional all-alcohol license that then it is assigned to someone?
It's, it's, if I'm not, if I remember, if I'm correct in saying, this all-alcohol license is particular for this location, when they, if and when they decide to close, that license goes away.
Right.
So it's- It doesn't become, it doesn't become an additional license in town.
Okay, so right now, they have a beer and wine license, does that beer and wine license then become available to someone else, since this is an all-alcohol license?
Yes.
Okay, just clarifying.
Because you can't have a beer and wine and an all-alcohol, because all-alcohol encompasses the alcohol beer and wine, so-
And Mrs. Brooks, in the interest of full transparency, it was polled last year because it wasn't drafted properly, and, so, that's why, that's why that didn't happen, so.
And now you're back, and it's drafted beautifully, so thank you.
We'll, we'll find out.
It, no, it was an explanation, it was an explanation-
In order, right.
Yeah, as we go through the whole thing.
Exactly.
So this was just an explanation as to why, and give us some background information so that we can make an informed decision when it comes time to, to make our recommendations. Okay, thank you.
We're good. Thank you for all you do, because the town's in very good shape, and you guys can, you, all, you people, not guys, but excuse me.
Flattery, counselor, flattery.
Thank you.
Okay.
Have a good night.
You too. Alright, so, town meeting warrant, we need to vote on these articles tonight, correct? Alright, so-
Is there, is this the absolute deadline tonight on this, on the voting for each of the articles, or do we have any flexibility?
We did hold next Monday night in case we needed it. We did put a hold on-
The town clerk would, needs, the very latest for her to get things out would be the 14th.
So we have an option if we need to pull some articles that we need for further discussion, there is, there is a possible option, if needed.
Well, I mean, the thing is, is that if you want to pull them, or you, you don't have to vote for them.
No, let me, let me rephrase it, if we need further discussion before we vote, we do have an option, I'm not saying I want it or not, but an option that we can take it for next week.
We, we can, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but tomorrow, the next, I would like to hold a meeting specifically for the town administrator position, and potential, basically, what are we gonna do moving forward? So, alright, alright, so let's go through these articles. Article one is the community preservation, this is the administrative budget, they seek to put $35,000 into administrative expenses, board's pleasure?
Motion to accept.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Mrs. Brooks.
Mrs. Brooks, all those, any questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, none unanimous. Article two, community preservation committee, it's to appropriate monies into the, of the annual revenues in the amount of $330,000, $110,000 in each of the housing reserve, the open space reserve, and the historic preservation reserve, board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Ms. Brooks. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, none unanimous. Article three?
Mr.?
Yes.
One, one note, I think it's just worth noting here that we've gone through these articles, we've read them, we've heard, we've heard a lot of testimony, so that even though this vote's being done quickly, I think it's been done because we are informed, and it's an informed vote.
Thank you. Article three, the dais landing dinghy storage improvements, looking to appropriate $9,000 from CPC funds to be used for addition, for an upgrade of the dais landing dinghy storage. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Brooks.
Mrs. Brooks. Alright, any questions on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, none unanimous. Article four, harbor dredging design and permitting, seek to appropriate $10,000, I'm assuming that's a match?
Yes.
Yes, okay, alright, board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Mrs. Brooks.
Mrs. Brooks. Mrs. Brooks. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed none unanimous. Article five, upon a Gansett Park and Dais Landing master plan, seek to appropriate $15,000.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Mrs. Brooks.
Mrs. Brooks. On the motion, any questions? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Negative, any, no's, okay, passes, unanimous. Article six, housing, Dartmouth Housing Production Plan. Seek to appropriate $25,000 from the CPC for, to fund the Dartmouth Housing Production Plan.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Mrs. Brooks.
On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed none unanimous. Article seven, Cornell Pond Trail Development. Seek to town will appropriate $24,000 from the CPC fund for the Cornell Pond Trail Development as previously stated by Mr. Buddy Baker.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Mrs. Brooks.
On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed none unanimous. Article eight, appropriation of the cemetery sale of lot fund to appropriate $2,000 from the lot fund for, to be spent on cemetery purposes in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 114, Sections 15 and 25. Board's pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by? Mrs. Bro, Mr. O'Neil. No, you guys.
Mixing it up.
Yeah, mixing it up. Your personal rights and minutes are going to be very pissed. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed none unanimous. Article nine, establish the FY 2025 maximum spending budget for revolving funds. Cemetery revolving fund at $4,500, recreation and park revolving fund at $20, $250,000, and the library fund for lost and damaged items at $3,500. Board's pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
O'Neil.
Mr. O'Neil. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed none unanimous. Article 10, acceptance of the capital planning committee report for the funding of the FY 2025 capital plan. Items, school items, $615,000, DPW administrative, $185,000, DPW Highway Division, $633,250, the Water Enterprise Fund, $250,000, Sewer Enterprise Fund, $300,000, Solid Waste Enterprise Fund, $286,000, Water Management Enterprise Fund, $34,850. Board's pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Mr. O'Neil.
Mr. O'Neil, thank you. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed none unanimous. Article 11, appropriation for collective bargaining. To fund the collective bargaining between the town and police brotherhood in the following amount for FY 2023, $310,000, for FY 2024, $390,000 from the collective bargaining stabilization to personnel services, and $260,000 from the tax levy. Board's pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
O'Neil.
Mr. O'Neil. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed none unanimous. Article 12, salaries and stipends of elected officials, only one, town clerk, $98,200, um, $98,277, I guess it's, since it's 2025, it'll be $102,685.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Mr. O'Neil.
Mr. O'Neil. On the motions, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed none unanimous. Schedule 13, which, Article 13, Schedule A, FY 2025 budget as printed in your warrant. Total amount, $103,653,491.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Mr. O'Neil.
Mr. O'Neil. On the motion, any questions? First time over $100 million, people. Okay, on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed none unanimous. All right, Article 14, funding sewer and septic betterments. See if the town will vote to appropriate $1,151,733 from the sewer betterment revenue to cover the debt service and to see if the town will vote $32,618 from the septic betterment to an associated fees on the Title V septic betterment loans as administered by the Board of Health. Board's pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Mr. O'Neil.
Mr. O'Neil. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? None unanimous. Article 15, funding the solid waste enterprise fund. Total cost, $1,986,680. Board's pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
O'Neil.
Mr. O'Neil. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed none unanimous. Article 16, funding the Water Department Enterprise Fund. Vote to approve $6,179,325.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Mr. O'Neil.
Mr. O'Neil. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed none unanimous. Article 17, funding the Sewer Department Enterprise Funds. Vote see if the town will vote to approve $6,9635.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Mr. O'Neil.
Mr. O'Neil. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed none unanimous. Article 18, funding the DCTV Enterprise Fund, $615,400.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Mr. O'Neil.
Mr. O'Neil. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed none unanimous. For a further breakdown of all the items, just please see the special article warrants. They give you all the breakdown of each individual item. I'm just reading the aggregate. Article 19, funding the Water Waste Management Enterprise Fund to the tune of $355,534.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Mr. O'Neil.
Mr. O'Neil. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed none unanimous. Personal bylaw amendments, salary adjustments. Beach rake operated at $50, library tech less than 15 hours scheduled and substitutes $20 to $26, assistant recreation director $19 an hour.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Mrs. Brooks.
Mrs. Brooks. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed none unanimous. Article 21, establishment of a long-term capital stabilization fund.
Motion to approve.
All right, this just establishes a fund. No, no money, just you've got to make the fund and then fund the fund. Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Mrs. Brooks.
Mrs. Brooks. On the motion, any questions?
Comment?
Mr. Tattelbaum.
I would like to acknowledge the work of Mr. McGinnis and the Long Range Plan. This is a long time coming and look forward to nurturing this account and our plan going forward, one year after year after year. Thank you.
After year after year after year, thank you.
Fifty years worth.
Yep, all right. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed none unanimous. Now comes time to fund the capitalization, stable funds to $1 million. Motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Mrs. Brooks.
On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed none unanimous. Article 23, zoning bylaw. This is the ADUs of the accessory dwelling units as previously presented by our town planner.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by, oops, I think I went ahead and went. Motion made by Mr. Mickelson. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mrs. Brooks. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed none unanimous. Article 24 is the amendments to the wetlands bylaw provisions as presented by Mark Garrett.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Mrs. Brooks.
Mrs. Brooks. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed none unanimous. Article 25, 247 Russell's Mills Road, the old police station site, sale of land. This will vote to authorize the select board to sell the property.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded?
By Mrs. Brooks.
Seconded by Mrs. Brooks. So enthusiastically.
Yeah.
All right, on the motion, any questions?
I would like to...
Mr. Tattelbaum.
Offer just a comment. This was language put together by our town council and our experience is that when you, sometimes you send something off to the state for approval, it comes back or something, it's not exactly as you wish, but it always comes back as something that's legally acceptable by the state and by our own. And it does leave, as I understand it, we discussed last week, it does leave us as a board the ability to be flexible and to be sensible and to put together a package that makes sense. And I think it's a, we're leaving it up to town meeting to give us that flexibility. We don't have to sell it. If it doesn't meet all these standards we create and I look forward to crafting something that makes sense and pleases everyone that we try to develop it to a, to sell it to the point where it's acceptable and it's a great project or maybe it doesn't happen at all, but I think we do have that flexibility.
Anyone else? On the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? None unanimous. Land acquisition, Article 26, Pascomanska River Aquifer. And this will vote to authorize the Board of Public Works as the Board of Water Commissioners to acquire up to a total, up to a total cost of $815,000 for the drinking water supply protection purposes and further to appropriate the sum of $350,000 towards the cost of that acquisition.
Motion to approve.
Hold on a minute. Okay, all right. And then it says here to further clarify that no portion of said appropriation shall be borrowed or expended until and unless the Board of Public Works has received private donations or gifts in acquisitions in the amount of $200, equal to $215,000 and to further clarify that no portion of appropriation shall be expended unless the Board of Public Works separately expends towards the acquisition of at least $465,000 in funds stemming from a total of said donations, gifts, grants, or community preservation funds, which the expenditures of community preservation funds mandates. Board's pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Seven.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Ms. Brooks. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed none unanimous. Article 27, the citizens petition for the all alcohol beverage license. You've heard from Attorney Bullard. On the motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson. Is there a second?
By Mrs. Brooks.
Seconded by Mrs. Brooks. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed none unanimous.
Mr. McDonald, before you continue. The remaining articles are charter amendment changes. Since I have sat on the charter review committee and Mr. O'Neil has sat on the charter review committee, I would like to ask Mr. Tattelbaum, and I ask Mr. Tattelbaum to second these only because Mr. McDonald has also sat on the charter review committee.
So the motion has to come from the left side of the table.
Thank you.
Okay.
Lot of pressure.
That's all right, you're used to it.
Thank you.
Article 28, charter amendment. This is the omnibus corrections. This is probably the biggest one and probably the one. There are, there will be presented corrections to grammar, scrivnis errors, and...
Syntax.
Syntax, punctuation. Basically, when it was typed up and presented, there were some grammatical errors. Having a teacher, an educator being part of the charter commission, a lot of this was pointed out. So it's like doing my final report, get it graded on. So this is just a simple correction to the language where maybe select board was in lowercase, should be in uppercase, where the town of Dartmouth was in lowercase and maybe Dartmouth was spelt wrong or something like that. So that's what this is. Board's pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
David.
A second.
All right, motion made and seconded by Mr. Tattelbaum. On the motion, any questions? Mr. Tattelbaum.
I realize we're not voting on, we're voting on something we haven't seen. This will be presented for the first time when we get the printed warrant mailed to us?
My understanding is, is it's still, a lot of it is still being worked on and it'll be sent to town meeting in the appropriate manner so that when you see the changes, the scrivnis errors, the punctuation marks, it'll be in color?
Nope.
No?
Nope, that was changed color to print it. We were told that it was too costly. So Mr.?
Could have notified me, I would have printed it at my office.
Attorney Savistano has created documents that will be in a gray highlight, strikeout, and changes in addition will be shown in a gray highlight, bold italics.
Okay.
So it will be...
Shouldn't this vote be somewhat qualified in some form? The fact that we have not seen it, but we, we approve the fact that we, we accept the fact, we'll see it for the first time with everybody else?
Well, if you want.
We can hold these, this section.
We can hold off on the charter commission until next week as long as we, if we can get the paperwork beforehand.
That's...
I, I'm not saying that's necessary. Can we, can we craft our vote so that, well, are we going to have it?
No, we're not, we're not going to do a contingent vote. We're not going to do a contingent vote.
Have it next week?
We have to have it next week because next week's, the sixth, so next week would be the 13th.
13th, yep.
And Mrs. Pascal Aruda needs to have it on the 14th to print.
My birthday.
So we will have it this week.
Your birthday?
14th. Okay, so, so can we, wait a minute, let me ask something.
We have to have it.
Can we vote on some, some of these amendments, the charter amendments?
I'm happy to hold all remaining warrant articles if you want to, so you can see it.
We're going to hold off until we get all the paperwork.
Yeah, but some we could vote for and it would eliminate unnecessary time.
We can pass this one.
You know what I'm saying?
Some are fully written in this warrant. That one isn't, it will be in a...
So the omnibus, we'll skip until next week.
Maybe we'll come back to it later, but...
No, it'll be a Schedule B.[1597.64] No, it'll be a Schedule B, so like Schedule A is printed, it will be a completely different handout in the packet to be mailed.
So a contingency vote is, some we don't, not want to consider.
We're not going to do a contingency vote.
Okay.
We're going to vote yes or no, so. All right, so we'll skip Article 28. Article 29, this is what it'll show in the article. This is the charter amendment, the Board of Assessors. And basically what this does is this changes the current way the Board of Assessors are created, from an elected board to an appointed board. Board's pleasure.
I'd like to say that I certainly am very much in favor of this. And have we considered the rollout of, once this is accepted, how, I know it has to be voted on as well, but it's just, the, the next election, it's, it becomes, and there's no election, it's just a.
There won't be an election.
Right, so is, if we consider the rollout?
No, it, the way it happens is that if town meeting approves this, then this goes to the voters.
Yeah.
As of, it'll go to the voters in April 2025.
April 2025.
And then after April 2025, that's when the language comes in and the board, there will be no Board of, the Board of Assessors will either wait, wait out their term and then as, they'll either work their term out, each one.
And all due respect, is this your opinion or is this something you've already?
I'm, I'm not exactly sure.
Anthony Stavastano said that as of July 1st, 2025, this is an appointed board. We would then appoint the members of the board.
So, so, but is, we're going to have to establish some kind of a rollout?
Well, whoever's finishing at that point, so in April 2025, on the, that, at that election, there will be one of the members of the assess, Board of Assessors will actually have their name on the ballot to be voted into their office. If this is approved by town meeting and it goes onto the ballot in April 2026, this ballot question will also be on the same ballot. And what will happen is this person will have then been voted in for a three-year term. So when it comes time to appointing that person, we will appoint that person to a three-year term. The two remaining people on the board, should they want to continue, they would be appointed for the end of their term, a two-year and a one-year.
This is your understanding of Attorney Stavastano?
This is Attorney Stavastano.
Okay, so there is a, there is a.
There's a different rollout for every one of these.
The timeline.
I fear each, each one of these officers.
It's the same thing as the Board of Health.
Okay. Is that what you understand, let's begin us that way? Thank you.
All right, so I still need a motion on this.
Motion to approve.
Okay, a motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Second.
Mr. Tattlebaum. On the motion, any questions?
I wasn't ready, didn't you?
That's okay.
We're not ready.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None unanimous. Next one is the same thing, but this time the Board of Health, removing it from an elected position to an appointed position.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Tattlebaum. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None unanimous.
Hold this one off, this 31.
You want, all right, so you can, you can either hold it off or you can choose to, whatever you want to do.
I'd like to discuss it.
But then, discuss it.
Okay, Article 31, the charter amendment, the superintendent of public works. What this does is this, the first sentence of Section 4.5(c), to be deleted and replaced with the following, "The select board shall appoint for a term not more than three years and shall fix the compensation of the Board of Public Works, shall exercise and perform under its supervision and direction such powers, rights, and duties assigned to it under subsection B as time, as, as it may from time to time designate." All right, discussion. Mr. Tattlebaum.
I recognize that months ago, this became, this issue came before us and we were all quite concerned about how the compensation issue rolled out. And as a result, that's why this, this amendment appeared. Certainly in the months, many months following that time, a lot, a lot has happened. We've had a, what I would call a rigorous and qualified board trying to do the right thing when it comes to the Department of Public Works. There are issues there of structure and, and responsibility that are, that need to be addressed, and they've expressed an interest to do that. And I think that any vote to change, anything now would be, I think, a detriment in terms of let them go out and do their work and come back to us. And I would like to recommend that we table this and it, it's removed from the, from the warrant. And give, give the board a chance to come back to us. And I do realize that if it becomes a charter change, then we have to, it's complex. I do realize that they may, many, many of the changes they may present to us won't require a charter change, but I'm hopeful because there's a, there's an aggressive understanding of we need some reform over there and let them do their work and come back to us. And I would, I would, I think any kind of adjustment like this is premature and give it a chance to come back.
I'm just going to ask that according to Attorney Stavastano, we cannot hold, as a Board of Selectmen, we cannot hold an article back from being on the warrant. We can vote in favor of the article, or not in favor of the article, but we at this level cannot pull an article. However, I would ask that we hold this article because in research, we had researched that the name of the position had been changed from superintendent, and I was given an update where the name of the position was changed to director. So it should be Director of Public Works, not superintendent.
So you're saying that we can't remove it from the warrant?
We cannot remove it, but we could vote it down. So when it would go to town meeting, whatever our vote is, that would be the vote, but it would remain on the warrant.
Town meeting will still have a vote to vote yes or no.
You still have a vote, yes.
Yes. And people do look at that and say, you know, why did they vote in favor or not in favor? But it might be helpful if next Monday night, when we're discussing this, to have Anthony Stavastano here.
All right, we'll hold, we'll hold off on Article 31 until next week. Article 32.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
May I just say a few words? I promise I'll be sure. First, my name is Robert Almy. I'm the chair of the Public Works Board. Thank you for hearing me. The board met this morning and approved a memorandum to your board and to the charter commission, which I hope you'll take a look at.
Yes.
And the other thing that I want to point out, I want to expand on Mr. Tattlebaum's comment. We have in our budget to do a rate and efficiency study for the Public Works Department. We hope to finish that in, during the summer. That result has to come back to your board because that's the way things should be done. And so I will commit to bringing that back to the board for discussion. We can discuss the kinds of changes that are appropriate for the Public Works Department. The work that's been done on this warrant, you will, that language can be corrected, you'll still have that language, the opportunity to change it, and you have fall town meeting. At that time, if you choose, you could put this language on the fall town meeting and still make the election in the spring, which is the overall objective here. So by causing a, any kind of delay here, it's not going to delay the overall process. I'll let the memorandum that we sent to you speak for itself. Thank you.
Okay, we did, we did receive the memorandum, so.
Thank you for your consideration.
All right, so we're going to hold off on Article 31. Article 32, charter commission regarding the Dartmouth Historical Commission. It'll be reducing the number of members of the commission from nine to seven with their approval. On the, on the article.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
I'd like to second that motion.
Mr. Tattlebaum.
Thank you.
You're the only one who's going to second it. Well, not really, but. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
None unanimously, any opposition? None unanimous. I can make a motion to second for discussion purposes only, so, just to let you know. All right, charter commission, Parks and Recreation. All right, this one here is to see if the town will vote to submit to the voters the approval of the following amendment, that the last sentence of subsection 3.5a be deleted and replaced with the following, "The persons receiving the highest number of votes shall be elected to the board." Okay.
Would you like me to explain this one?
Go ahead, you can take it.
All right, I will explain this one. This one is what I would call an article of embarrassment. So a previous charter commission had put forth that the Parks and Rec would be elected into their seats like the current Board of, the Select Board. So they would run for individual seats. That was discussed at a town meeting, that was put on a, an election, and the voters approved it. However, it was never given, the information was never given to the town clerk. So in the years since then, the Parks and Recreation Board have actually been elected to their seats as this charter would now read with this language. So this, you may recall, there were two people that ran and there were two seats open. If there had been three people that ran and two seats open, they would have run as a pool of candidates and the two highest vote-getters would have gotten the vote. So as I say, this is an embarrassment because the Parks and Rec have not been elected to their seats in that manner, and so what we're doing is reversing a former decision. But, so next year, if this passes at town meeting, next year on the April 2025 election, whoever is running for the Board of Parks and Rec would have to run for their seat because that is the current language in the charter. And on the same day of voting would be potentially the, this article that says that from that day forward, they would run as a pool of candidates.
So in other words, the, the current park board is, is elected like the school department, like the school committee, and when they should have been, elected like the select board. That's what it comes down to.
So we're correcting something that should have been done.
Where, what we're doing is we're adjusting the way they're elected to the way the practice has been for electing. We're correcting it, oops. Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Tattlebaum. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None unanimous. Charter admit, charter amendment, Article 34, Select Board. This is to change the way the Select Board is voted on instead of per seat. This will be two years, two, two election cycles, top two vote-getters. The third cycle, the single vote, they're on their own. So this, it'll be, the Select Board will no longer be voter, elected as we are now. Will be elected like the school committee, top two vote-getters in the two, two years when there's two seats open. Pleasure.
Motion to accept.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Tattlebaum. On the motion.
I have a couple of comments.
Mr. Tattlebaum.
I made some calls to handful of very cooperative town, assistant town administrators getting some feedback in different towns and, and not one of them is doing it. They're similar towns in our size. Not one of them is doing it by lot as we do it now. And they, they have done it in the past, or a lot of these people who worked there have worked for other towns and done the past. And I got a resounding support for changing the way we elect the Select Board from these different towns. I'm not saying, it was not a scientific survey by any means, but I tried to find towns that were similar to ours in a very positive way. I, I personally think that, that it will, it will, you run the risk of having at least two new members sometimes, but on the other hand, I think you're going to get a bigger pool of people who are willing to go. And Mr. McDonald, I thought a lot about, last week you spoke about, you know, running on your record. I think if you're running and get the highest amount of votes, then you got a good record, people like what you're doing. So it doesn't eliminate that in terms of, in terms of running, it just, I think it just reinforces if I get that votes.
It never has. It was always the, the highest vote-getter for, for the lot.
No, but I'm talking about if, for two spots in the, at large. I think that.
Right.
It still satisfies that comment that Mr. McDonald made regarding standing by your record because.
We also have votes with, with one person for reelection. That doesn't deter from 20 people showing, getting votes and run against that person. So that's the way we did it before, so nothing seems to me, why, why change it? If it's, if it's not broken, leave it. Doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, I think you, now one of the downsides is you get some elections where there is no competition.
Right.
And I, I think that that's not necessary.
But that, this, this amendment, I mean, this charter amendment is not going to guarantee that process at all.
No.
Just remember that.
Mm-hmm. Okay. That's my comment.
All right, I'm, I'm lost here. Did I, was there a motion?
Yes, there was a motion.
Ten seconded.
We need to vote it.
Okay, I'm sorry. I got derailed.
I'd be interested in any comments from my colleagues before we vote.
Anybody else have anything else to say? I said my piece last week. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Me. Passes four to one. Charter amendment, Library Board of Trustees. This reduces the number of library trustees from six, for whatever reason, to five.
Motion to approve.
Motion, and this is with their blessing also?
No.
No, it's not.
No, now, it is no longer.
It's no longer their blessing, okay.
I have a second on the motion.
How did that happen?
All right, I, who knows? We had their blessing and now we don't have their blessing.
That's not, that's not very nice.
Well, you know, they turned the page. On the motion.
Yes.
Made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Tattlebaum. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None unanimous. And that concludes the warrant. Great job, people.
Well, now we go to special town meeting.
Now, yes, special town meeting. Let me get past Schedule A. Here we go. All right, special town meeting. Article 1, special town meeting, community preservation, FY 2024, community housing and historic preservation, to vote to transfer later appropriation monies from 2024 unrestricted fund in the amount of $60,000 to the revised fiscal year 2024 budget.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Mrs. Brooks.
Mrs. Brooks. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None unanimous. Article 2, appropriation of previous approved capital project, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $57,736.97 from the Water Enterprise Fund retained earnings for the purpose of covering the costs incurred as part of the June 2019 special, and, special annual town meeting by Violetta Wells.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Mrs. Brooks.
Mrs. Brooks. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None unanimous. Article 3, special town meeting, appropriation of previous approved capital project, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $359,804.84 from surplus revenue for the purpose of covering the costs incurred as part of the October 2019 fall annual town meeting for the Veterans Memorial Stadium construction project.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Mrs. Brooks.
Mrs. Brooks. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None unanimous. Just need a motion now to sign both the, and, the, no?
Just the special. You haven't voted on all of them.
Oh, that's right. All right, we need a motion to sign the warrant for the special town meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Mrs. Brooks.
Mrs. Brooks. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None unanimous.
So that's the only one we'll sign.
Mr. McDonald?
Okay.
Annual town meeting next week.
So we have, so we have two articles that we did not vote on?
Just one.
No, we had two.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, which is the omnibus. And 31, which is the Board of Public.
Are we leaving that for next week?
Yes.
The 13th.
And, and we'll have a regular meeting and include that in?
Yes, we have a meeting next, next Monday.
Okay.
We will.
Executive session.
We will put, no executive session, at least unless something comes up.
Yeah.
We can talk about, I don't know, like what you want to have on there.
All right, I'll, I'll discuss this with Mr. McGinnis as to whether we have something on executive, but it is, it'll be very short.
Hopefully it's not, you don't need it. You have three meetings in a row that way.
I know. Well, we're lucky. I like to see you at least once a week.
There's a charge.
There's a charge.
I like to see you. I know, charge.
To see my agent.
No, it's a freebie.
Yeah, we'll have, we'll put those up, up front, first two, first two things we take care of for that night on the regular agenda. And then we'll go to the town, town administrator discussion.
Okay.
All right, next item on the agenda, we have the memorandum of agreement between the town of Dartmouth and the Police Brotherhood. Mr. McGinnis.
Yes, this is, or for the MOA for the Police Brotherhood contract, which includes patrol officers, sergeants, and lieutenants at our police department. And it is for FY 23 through FY 25. It's taken some time to get the contract resolved. We feel, we finally have come to an agreement and we think it's fair for both parties. We feel, we finally have come to an agreement and we think it's fair for both parties, and it provides for a 3% COLA for the officers. There's a number of other items in the contract I can go into in detail if you, if you need, but it makes some minor changes to the pay scale for sergeants and also just some stipends. It also allows for the Brotherhood to support the town if the town were to decide in the future to withdraw from civil service. Not that the town is looking to do that right away, but it just, there's been issues with hiring due to civil service. I think anyone who's in the know reads about it, it's been in the news quite a bit lately. So this is not something, like I said, the town is looking to do immediately, but the Brotherhood would support it as part of this MOA.
And this will close all contract negotiations for units?
Yes, so will be, have all contracts settled.
Will we start up again?
Yes, for FY, starting in FY 26.
Okay, all right.
Around the bin.
Yep. All right, so I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, gladly.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Mrs. Brooks.
Mrs. Brooks, on the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, none unanimous. Okay, town administrator update.
Just in FYI, the town's local receipts for FY 24, the current fiscal year we're in, are coming in over what we budgeted, which is great. I know people look at the state and the state's having some trouble meeting their estimated local receipts, ours are almost $750,000 over what we budgeted, so. The town is, we're very fiscally responsible, and I think this shows that. Beach stickers have been for sale online, to date they've already sold 602 stickers online. And also this year, the concert passes for Upon Against It Landing will be, also be available online for purchase, so. The Recreation Center Building Committee has gotten together and selected an owner's project manager, Palm Roy Associates, you may recall that name, they were the OPM on the police station construction.
Yep.
So the committee has selected them, the next step is formalizing a contract for the Board, we'll have that at a future meeting. And then, once Palm Roy's on board, they'll start to select the design firm. We have a kind of minor, but big internal, we have a board and committee database update, which updates all of the boards and committees from a current antiquated database to one that's more streamlined and efficient. Some board and committee members may have been contacted as part of the reorganization, but just to confirm some information, but that is all up and line, it's going to really streamline things internally for us and also for the public when they, as we look for people to volunteer to be on boards and committees. Dias Landing Marina Construction bids were received last week, we received a number of bids and the bids were all lower than expected, so we hope to have a contract for approval in the future that is under what was budgeted. And lastly, the library always has great statistics, so last fiscal year, this fiscal year we're in, they've had 115,000 visitors to their library, so they do quite a bit of business there.
It's a lot of people.
Wonderful.
That is all I have for that.
We need to sign that contract.
Here it is.
There you go. What was the, not the previous item, the previous, the three items from last?
The Building Committee, the Recreation Center, beach stickers.
Boards and committees.
Boards and committees. Looking at the town's website and looking at the makeup of the elected officials, each elected official has a town email, which people can contact them. As far as the other boards, the appointed boards and whatnot, do, would it make sense to have the chairman of each board have their email? I know it changes over a year, every year, and that might be logistically something strange to do because generally most, if you look at all the appointed officials, they don't have email, there's no email access for the public to contact them.
An email to that board?
Right.
Well, my recommendation, we, this is the discussion that comes up regularly, pretty much all of the boards or committees have a staff liaison that has a town email address. I would recommend continuing to use that staff liaison email because people change, people don't all check their emails. If we create email, A, and we also have to, you know, for town emails, we do pay for the email addresses, so. In my experience, they have not been well utilized. It's, it's better to have someone that has an email address, that's the liaison to the Board or Committee, that can manage the emails and then forward them to board and committee members to their, either their personal address or somehow get them the information.
All right, so then, would it be, would it make sense then to have some kind of a statement saying that if you wish to email any of the board members, you know, this is the email to use?
Uh, we can put that on the websites, yes. Or they would just click to email the board and we would have it directed to this now.
Yeah, or just, yeah, email board, you know, type of thing. And just, you know, all right, this is, I already said, you need your signature. Okay, all right, great, thank you.
Old business.
Old business.
No new updates on any of them, plus cornered loc, broadband, or Title V.
All right, we have the minutes of April 8th to review and questions, anybody have any questions on them? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Tattlebaum on the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None unanimous. Select Board Updates, Mr. Tattlebaum, do you have anything?
I, I would like, when it's reasonable and hopefully as soon as possible, to ask the new building inspector to come before us to give us an update, how he's doing.
I have him scheduled for the 20th.
Thank you. And then hopefully, from there, we can then do some more planning in terms of getting some input from contractors and interested parties.
Get that focus group up.
But firstly, and, do we, do we need to ask him, instruct him, is it what we're looking for or is it just an update or anything specific that we should be asking him for?
Well, number one, see how he's, how he's making out so far, you know, whether or not.
You ought to verbalize that to him.
Well, I think we, I think we need to just get an update on to how, if there was any backlogs, if he's cleared up any backlogs, how the inspections are going.
Maybe some suggestions of changes.
Right.
Who knows?
Right, type of thing.
Send those, send that up to him previously.
Yeah, I think Mr. McGinnis knows exactly what we're looking for and he'll relay that to the Commissioner.
Thank you.
And then I do think that we need to make sure he's aware that we want to set up a forum with the folks who actually use the portal, so of all the builders or...
Right, even the homeowners.
Residents who are looking to get even a swimming pool, you know, how is that going? To get that, and then we need a third meeting, which would be with the other, you know, the building department, the planning department, the zoning board, the Board of Health, DPW, all Historic Commission, all of those that have an input somewhere along the line in the online permitting process to come together and talk about what makes sense.
Well, that and, that and meeting, meeting timelines.
Timelines, right.
Right, because there are, because there are, there have been a couple of instances where there's been some timeline lags that need to be addressed and taken care of, and those are readily, you know, you can see that because the timeline is there, but that's something that...
But it becomes an issue if one of, if a committee, if a board is holding it up for something and then someone panics and pushes it through.
Right, because there are some, because the Commissioner, the building, the building department is under a timeline, but also timeline is, the Historical Commission also has a timeline, so, especially when it comes to a demo permit on a historical home, they definitely have a timeline. All right.
My only, the second comment would be that appropriate, I think it's wait till after town meeting, but the issue of heavy-duty plastic shopping bags and NIPs bottles is something I'd like to bring forward, and I would like, I think it's appropriate to do that once the town meeting's over.
Well, you can do that, maybe if you want, you can create the articles for fall town meeting and see what happens.
We already have one on, on the books.
I think it's put together.
Oh, we have thin film.
Right.
Right, he's looking for thick film.
Right.
Put together, maybe a little forum and get some people's input and move on from there, and with the expectation to move to fall meetings, fall town meetings.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mickelson, you have anything?
Yeah, everything's fine.
Okay, that's wonderful.
You sure?
I'm glad.
Thank you.
Mrs. Brooks?
Appreciate it, no, I'm not bellyaching tonight.
Okay, good, save it.
You have nothing?
I have nothing tonight.
Ms. O'Neill?
Sean, did we send the CVs that we got for, for the planning board to Christine? The, you know, the resumes, does she have all of the people?
No, we haven't, we've not distributed those yet, we, we can, it's, the board was deciding tonight what to do once, once that's done.
Let's, whatever we have, let's send it to them anyway so they can begin to take a look.
Yeah.
Okay, I have nothing, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?